All right.
Great. Let's call the July 12, 2017 Heinsburg Planning Commission meeting to order. So first order of business is agenda changes. I don't have any. Does anybody else have agenda changes? Okay, we'll move on to public comments for non-agenda items. So we actually have some people in the audience tonight. Are you here for agenda items or are you here for non-agenda items?
Get a chance to see the agenda.
It is, yep.
It is an agenda item?
First thing.
Okay.
Well, at least the zoning changes.
Yeah.
These two characters are here for one of the housekeeping changes.
Okay.
So I was gonna have you guys move, not chronologically, but front to back of the regulations. The one that they're interested in is pretty early on in the regs, so I think you're gonna get to it. If you wanna skip to it and do it first, it's up to you.
Let's, you know, let's, yeah, let's, yeah, well, I don't mind skipping around and making sure we get to it.
Okay.
It's kinda nice to actually have somebody here, we might as well.
We heard about the cheesecake, so.
I don't know, guys, I'm not sure. You don't get a piece until you stay very close.
At least one at a date.
You know that.
I promised last time that I'd do something, so.
Because it was Alex's birthday last night.
How about that? Happy belated.
Thank you. And Jeff.
Okay, so which item is it, Alex?
So in the housekeeping changes, you had, you should all have, sorry, the printed versions over here. Did everybody already grab one or would you like to print?
I just got up and got one.
You got, alright. Anybody's got one more?
Oh, no, but I'm working soft copy.
Is this different than anything we have from before?
Yeah. This was, this was part of your digital packet, but I said I would print it out because it's ridiculously long, so would you like the printed version?
Yeah, I've got the one, the top thing.
The summary?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, there you have the rest of it as well.
Alright.
Joe, did you want printed?
No, I'm mainly a digital person.
Okay, very good. How about you guys, would you like the?
I've got it.
Yeah, alright, here's one for you.
Thank you.
There's another one for you. Okay, so in the shorter document, the one that starts housekeeping regulation revision summary, third change, so section 2.5.6 called contiguous area requirement. So if you wanna read that little descriptor and then in the larger document turn to that section to see what's, what it actually says. And I'll put it up on screen for whatever that's worth.
You're looking at zoning, right, 2.6.
Yes.
For things to this on the screen.
Yes, you have it there in front of you as well, but. If I can get this on tape.
Pitch nine.
There we go.
What's that?
Pitch nine, I'm on.
That's on pitch nine.
So it looks like, yeah, I can't, I can't forget you.
So as I noted in the little summary, as best I could tell from my research, this provision was added to the regs in 1986. We tweaked it while I was here, when Joe was here in 2003, very minor tweak. I've never liked it, I don't understand why it's there. It wasn't clear from 1986 why it was added. And it seems both unnecessary and a little outdated, given, especially in the rural parts of town where we've, we've reduced the minimum lot size to something as small as a half an acre. But one of the reasons Jesse is here is that for particular properties, it's a real, it's a real problem. It makes subdivision of those properties nearly impossible. Properties that are split by a private road right-of-way, where the road actually creates what looks like sort of a natural subdivision. And were it to be a town road, it would be a natural subdivision, but this section says if it's a private road, it creates little sub-parcels. And then in order to have them be owned separately through subdivision, those divided portions have to, have to be of a certain size. So it's particularly problematic in the Rural Residential One District where we haven't monkeyed with lot size. And so there are still three-acre minimum lot sizes. And that's the trouble that, that Jesse ran into. But again, for, for quite a number of years, I've been wanting to jettison this because I just don't see what its point is. And I don't think it's protecting anything, I think it's just, it just makes some landowners pull their hair out when they think about, you know, how to do a subdivision. Mitch, for what it's worth, our, our previous zoning administrator, who's now our development review coordinator, has reviewed all of these changes and he was, he was of the same mind, didn't see the value in it.
So, private roads or easement, or even just easements?
Yeah, I mean, not easements for utilities, but access easements.
How often has that come up in the past, you know, in the years that you've been here, that this has been an issue for?
Well, I don't wanna overplay my hand, it's, it's not, it doesn't come up very often. Probably if I, if I can think back over 15 years, just a handful of times, you know, maybe three or four times.
But enough to prevent?
But, but when it comes up, especially in the Rural Residential One District, it, it's just hard to work around. Because of those minimum lots, those minimum lot sizes hasn't, haven't been tinkered with yet.
So if I'm reading this right, it's saying that if you've got a lot of parcel, if you've got a lot that's under five acres, and you have one of these issues where a private road or something and you wanna subdivide it, you're basically saying one cannot be 20% smaller than the other, assuming it's being split.
You gotta have.
Oh, no, sorry, I should clarify, it's 2.56 in the old regs. When I, when I made the change, all the numbering changed, so you're reading 2.56 out in the new version.
In the new version.
So it's the, it's the, it's the portion that's stricken, under red, strikeout.
Oh, I thought 2.56, the new one, is the replacing of the strikeout.
No, so the way these, sorry, I should've explained, the way these track changes work in Microsoft Word is what you delete is under strikeouts and what you add is just under, underlines.
So if you had five acres, you gotta have three acres on one side of the road.
Yeah, and what's, what's significant is that if you have a, how do, how do we do this? I, I should probably bring Jesse's property up and show you an actual example because it's hard for me to explain it, it's easier for me to show it. Let me do that, hold on just a sec. It doesn't impact the ability to use a property as it exists today. So, you know, you have a property, you wanna build on it, you wanna put a, add a garage, if you already have a house on it, doesn't, doesn't impact that. It's, it's really, it really comes into play when you're looking to subdivide. And when that property has either wa, certain waterways or private road easements wa, wandering through them.
So it, like, does the road intersect the lot, is that what you mean, Alex?
Yes, exactly, exactly. So bear with me a moment here while that's warming up and this GIS is coming alive.
So what was the rationale, Alex? I mean, it's interesting to read that. It says, if you're subdividing, a lot size requirements apply to at least one of the lots being created.
At, at least one of the sub-parcels, so not, so the note, the wording here is a little confusing. If, if your, if your lot is divided by a road or one of these waterways, then we're gonna call one side of that a, you know, a sub parcel. It's not subdivi, subdivided, it's, it's one parcel. And what it's saying is that one side or the other has to meet the minimum lot size requirement. So you can't create a lot, for example, in a three-acre minimum lot size area that has two acres on one side of the river and one acre on the other. One side or the other has to have the three-acre minimum lot size. Even though the lot is three acres, because it's divided by that road or that waterway, one side or the other has to be three acres. We don't care which side, we don't care whether you develop on the little side or the big side, but one of them has to have that. And so, yeah, why, what's the point of that? I, I don't know, it's never quite made sense to me why we would care if the lot itself meets the minimum lot size. My guess is that at some point in the past, people saw minimum lot size as a surrogate for the minimal amount of land that you need to live. And, and if your, if your part of your property was on the other side of the La Platte River, you weren't really gonna be able to use it. And so they wanted you to have more on one side. The, the tweak we made in 2003 was to say it didn't matter where you did the development, whether it was on the little side or the big side. So we, we sorta, if that was the reason, we sorta undermined it in 2003 with our little revision. But maybe you can think of other reasons, but here, let me, let me show you an actual example, so here's a town of Heinsburg.
I think towards that end, I mean, you could still, if you think about a rural lot with, you know, a house and a driveway and a well and a septic area and, all the setbacks associated with all those things, especially in the case of a waterway.
Yeah. So to give you a real-world example from one of the folks who's here tonight, if we zoom in on the Partridge Hill neighborhood, which is just to the east of CBU, across the road and off of the Richmond Road, it's in this area. I'll zoom in one more time here. So we have, I'll use my cursor, if you can see the little hand on the screen there, a little tough with all the lights. But this is, this is the Richmond Road up in the upper left. Here's Partridge Hill coming off of it here, proceeds down here and turns, this, it continues this direction. This is Red Pine Road, I think it's called here. Richmond Road is a town road, the very initial piece of Partridge Hill is a town road, well, I guess to about here. And then it proceeds as a private road and right-of-way through here. So interestingly, if, if these two lots on either side of the town portion of Partridge Hill Road were owned in common by John Smith, they would be automatically subdivided into two different parcels because town roads subdivide parcels. But if this property here and here were owned by John Smith, they're not, but if they were, it would not be automatically subdivided because private roads don't automatically subdivide lots according to our regs. So in any case, this is Jesse Paul's property here, this very odd-shaped, long, with a little snout here. Kinda looks like the head and body of a seahorse. So this seahorse is, uh, let's see here, or Pez dispenser, Pez dispenser's better, yes. I thought the nose looked seahorsy, like, but alright, fine, Pez dispenser. This Pez dispenser is approximately 11 acres. And so it's in a three-acre zoning district, the RR1, it's not on sewer, so it definitely has subdivision potential. But as you can see, it is separated by Partridge, Partridge Hill Road here and by Red Pine Road here. So it's sort of separated into this chunk, this tiny little triangle here, and this triangle here. Jesse's house is right here, so it occupies this portion. We've talked, how long has it been that we've been talking, a year or more now?
Couple of years.
Yeah. This, this parcel just begs to wanna be subdivided perhaps at Partridge Hill or perhaps, you know, along Red Pine to, to allow there to be a building site or two, you know, up here somewhere. Now, there is a private homeowners association that they are subject to certain covenants for, which limits their ability to subdivide, but they still have some ability to do that. Regardless of that, we've had a hard time figuring out a way to divide it up so as to meet this contiguous area requirement because, because, because of the way it's written. And I'm trying to, maybe you can help me, Jesse, I'm trying to remember exactly how we, we came to that conundrum. You wanted originally to?
Probably the easiest way to describe it is the road becomes a break in contiguous nature of the land.
Sure.
The remaining piece of land where the home sits is less than the three acres. So the break in contiguous nature of the road doesn't allow subdivision because the, the house and the land that the house sits on is in a non-conforming sized lot, because it's less than three acres.
So this, this portion of the parcel here is the portion that doesn't conform. With that said, that's a pre-existing condition which wouldn't necessarily change via the subdivision. I know that Jesse, you and I worked through several possible ways to, to divide the property and we ran into this problem in a couple of them. For example, I don't remember if we ran this scenario, but certainly placing anything, you know, creating a lot in the vicinity of this, this triangle won't work, it won't meet that requirement. Trying to, trying to create a small three-acre lot somewhere right up in here doesn't work because it's split into these two pieces. So you have to kind of extend that line somewhere way down here to pick up enough acreage to make a viable lot that will have three acres here and whatever acreage over here if you were just to make a rectangle. In any case, it, it was, it was, it was very limiting as to what we could actually do with it. And Jesse's still pursuing it, Mitch is trying to help him work through that and work through the homeowners association requirements. But it, it's just one example of a property that makes it difficult. Russell, you have a similar situation, right? So I think, Russell, so Russell, your former fellow planning commissioner, lives here and his is a larger lot. But as you can see, if I turn the blue lines on here, this is Patrick Brook that runs through his property and goes up to the lakes. Patrick Brook is one of the water bodies that's specifically mentioned in this contiguous area part of the regs. And it says that if, if Patrick Brook is dividing your property, you, you have to have the minimum lot size on one side or the other of it if you're gonna have a lot. Well, this portion of his property, you correct me if I'm wrong, Russell, but this portion of Russell's property, again, sort of begs to become a building lot. But it's not three acres. So the only way to make a building lot here is to put the three acres for this lot over here somewhere. So you could still build here, but you'd have to add this acreage to three acres over here. Which when you try to draw it out, like, almost wraps up to Russell's house and cuts off where his barn is, it just doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make the resulting lot any more usable or any more conforming in any other way. And so that, that was the, that was the issue in your case too. And Russell's like, is there some way we can get a variance? And I'm like, no, this section is pretty clear, it just, I don't know why it's in the regs, it doesn't seem to make much sense. There were some other property owners several years ago where Lewis Creek was providing a similar issue. And they just didn't do anything at that point, but it, it's another water body that has that, has the same effect.
So the elimination of this article basically means that these either natural or man-made barriers or women-made barriers can, are basically discounted now.
They can span a parcel. You can create a parcel that has a river running through it or a private road running through it. And as long as the parcel meets the minimum lot size requirements, you're fine. You don't have to worry about whether it's divided by these kinds of things. I will tell you that in our regs, the definition of lot area excludes road right-of-ways. So we do sort of take them out when you're, when you're, when you're calculating how much acreage you need for the new lot you're making. And we can talk about that later, Mitch was hoping that we might chat about that as a housekeeping change. But, but that's been a, that's been a longstanding provision and it's pretty common in a lot of other municipalities that you don't, you don't get to count road right-of-ways in your lot area.
What about other forms of easements?
Uh, in terms of counting towards lot area, you get to count all of those, just, just road, just right-of-ways for access, yeah.
And natural waterways or other features like that that divide a property that?
Those count towards the lot area unless you're in the village growth area. We have a slightly different formula in the village growth area where we, we do allow you to count road right-of-ways because we think of roads as, you know, an integral part of the development pattern of the village. But we, we make you take out stream buffer areas, so we're not.
Seventy-five feet on each side of that?
Um, in the village growth area, it's a variable setback, some of them are 25 feet, like the canal, others are 100 feet, like Patrick Brook. The La Platte is 150 feet. So we're not consistent, we have a one, one lot area calculation in the village growth area and we have a different one for the rest of town.
Okay.
All, my only point was that if this section were to be deleted from the regs, it wouldn't necessarily change the fact that road right-of-ways are considered in terms of your lot area. So you typically have to make lots that are 3.1 acre instead of three in order to account for these shared road right-of-ways.
Alex, was this possibly in there to protect the waterways? And by deleting it, what's gonna, how's that's gonna affect them?
I, I can't see how this actually protects any waterways.
It's poorly written.
It deals with private roads as well and I don't think there's any private road protections that are garnered from this.
I mean, all, all the setbacks for things we feel important, structures, septic systems, all that, still stay in place.
Yeah, the, the waterway setbacks are still there. And during the subdivision process, which is where this really comes into play, the, the subdivision review standards, you know, are still, still hold in terms of protecting those primary resources and secondary resources. To me, this is, the reason this is in section 2.5, if you look at the rest of that section, is it's, it's like a technical specification for how you, how you build a lot, like where you, where you design it. You'll notice the section that Jeff was referring to that follows this one, that is now 2.56, is minimum width and depth dimension. So we talk about, you know, how, how wide and how long a lot can be. This has always been in that same context, it's sort of a dimensional standard with regard to lots. But I really don't, I, well, I'll stop saying it, but I really don't see it serving any positive purpose for the community. It's just sort of a thorn in the side of certain landowners when they have these things crossing their property.
Jesse, just as a question, if that little triangle is added to the upper portion, it's kinda like New York State. Does that then give you the required acreage?
No. Oh, if it was added, like if, if this rule went away and that triangle, yes, that would bring me over three acres.
What would be the size that's remaining that belong?
So the way it stands right now, the, the top triangle is roughly 2.7-ish acres, give or take. That little tiny triangle on the top is about a half acre and then the, the rectangle is around six and a half, seven acres.
So even the rectangle, or what's left over, it's not quite a rectangle, but could become two lots.
Uh, it could be our.
Not under their homeowners association covenants, but through our zoning, yes. Yep. Yeah, like I said, it's an 11-acre parcel in a three-acre zone, so.
Does the covenant in the homeowners association just basically say you can only subdivide once?
Yeah, it says you can only subdivide once and it said you can do neighboring boundary adjustments that do not count as a subdivision, but you can only subdivide once.
I see.
So then you would just be able to make one extra lot?
Unless those covenants changed, and they can. We had a landowner on Weed Road that walked around to the four homeowners that were a part of the covenants and they got them changed.
But, but if there's a lot of, as people in the association, it's very difficult.
Yeah, there's, I believe, this is your property right now.
Eight, yeah.
Yeah, so Patrick Brook is one border of my property.
Yes. And this stream here, is this parcel part of that?
Is.
See this under my finger? Is that part of this?
Yes.
It is.
But that, but that stream that you're pointing to, Ralph?
This?
Yes, that's not a named stream, it doesn't, it doesn't break the parcel into sub-parcels the way Patrick Brook does.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not coming, it's not outflowing out of Sunset Lake.
Yeah.
Isn't that more like a runoff from above?
Yeah, and but.
Because it's seasonal.
But with regard to section 2.56, that section names specific water bodies and there are only four or so of them. And it's, it's that Patrick Brook, but not, not the other one.
Well, I, I have no problem with that, making that change, it's, I mean, heaven knows how long it's gonna be until we get to, you know, looking at RR1 again, or again, and looking at it.
Yeah, well, that's what I've been telling both of these guys, is that, well, you know, the commission started work on Rural Residential One District a couple of years back, but we got sidetracked.
Barely.
Not sure when we're gonna get back to it, so some of these things might be addressed in terms of lot area changes.
And lot si, lot sizes, minimum lot sizes.
It could be years. And we're in housekeeping right now, so if you're amenable, it'd be great to.
I would just strike it, get rid of it.
Wanna have a formal vote? It's clear?
Sure.
All in favor of striking 2.5.6?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Sounds like we're agreement, we're gonna strike 2.56.
So it's gonna take three years for the select board to prove it.
No, no.
Don't get your hopes up.
Ralph, you're an optimist.
They've gotta get to the town plan first.
I know, what happened? After I eat the cheesecake, I'll feel better.
In all seriousness, Mr. Keelman, I realize you, you had some festivities this last weekend and probably still wearing off. But in all seriousness.
It'll go fast.
My hope is that, you know, you will wrap these up in a couple meetings and we'll get this ready for a public hearing. You'll deliver it to the select board in the fall. They won't take it up until after the budget's done, that's just, it's a black hole they go into during budget time. So I'm thinking February of next year is probably when the select board will actually act, you know, dig into and then subsequently act on these things, on these, on this proposal. So probably nine months to a year.
Oh my god.
You know, and that's, that's, I think that's a, a realistic, not an optimistic, uh, time horizon. It could go faster, but that would be optimistic. So did you guys wanna say anything more about that section or?
No, I think it was pretty well-covered, really.
Okay.
It just, we could never seem to come up with a tangible reason why it was there, you know, what, what it was designed to do. So.
We'll find out now.
The only thing that I can come up with that we didn't is maybe they were trying to keep the value of the property at a certain level. Whereas now, if you've got three acres and there's roads through it and everything else, people are kinda, eh, am I gonna wanna have that piece of property or not? That's the only thing I can think, but I look at it as that's kinda shifted to your discretion and, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm sure when we go to a public hearing, Roger, Roger Coen, who's on the planning commission, when this was, when this was added, will, will tell us what the reason was, if you can remember. Uh, do you guys wanna move backwards then, back to the top of the list and work, work your way down?
Yeah, let's start at the top.
Alright. So I am happy to walk through this page by page or just do it by the summer. So I am happy to walk through this page by page, or just do it by the summary, section by section. As is indicated in the top of the summary, there there are some dependencies that require little tiny changes. In sections that are not highlighted here. Um and so if you do look at it page by page, you're gonna pick up on some of those. But if, so either way, you wanna do the document or you wanna do it from the summary, you tell me.
Well, I, you know, I've just read through the summary. Um so I haven't.
Do you have that in your in your head? Okay, so the first item is the uh section two point one, which I'll put up on screen here.
I'm sorry to interrupt. If are if we're voting on the commission is voting, do we need motions and things or do I just?
I think it's gonna be up to the chair to decide whether this is just a, just a a friendly review. Or if there are some that deserve an actual motion. Ultimately, all we're doing tonight is reviewing the the language so that it can be formalized and you can go to a public hearing. The actual vote on this whole package is gonna come later. Uh so it's really up to Joe.
Let's go as friendly then.
But I liked the vote before. It gave you two audience members a very clear idea of where the where the commission stood on that change. I don't think they're here for anything else in here though, so I don't know. Okay, so section two point one is just. It's just.
Otherwise, it was just a straw poll.
Section two point one is just a a new sentence that uh says accessory uses are allowed in all zoning districts as outlined in section five point eight. Um and this is added in in relation to the rather wholesale revision of section five point eight that we'll get to later. And the reason I added it here is because if you read this section, which you probably haven't, cause I, Mitch and I don't look at this section much either. This is sort of the 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 basis for zoning. You have to be a permitted use or a conditional use. And if you're not one of those, you're prohibited. And so I thought it made sense to clarify that there are actually three uses. That are anticipated in zoning, permitted, conditional, and all the accessory uses that that are accessory to those principal uses. Um so, for example, we don't list uh in our permitted and conditional uses. Um backyard ice ranks uh or or um basketball courts. You know, those are are recreational accessory uses to a residential dwelling. And as you'll see when we get to five point eight, are perfectly fine. But the fact that they're not listed in the zoning in the list of permitted and conditional uses shouldn't imply that they're not allowed. And this this sentence sort of clarifies that.
I think question what you mean by some require permits. Doesn't everything require a permit?
No, so when we get to section five point eight, you'll see, um trying to think of a good example, um.
For ground pool?
Yeah, pools below a certain size don't require a permit. Um certain uses of your property, like you're having a garage sale. There's no structure involved. Um it's it, so you would, you wouldn't get a zoning permit for a building. But it is a use of the property. It's an accessory use and it's it's expressly allowed um and without a permit. There are others.
No, I I now I see where you're going.
Shed less than ten by ten.
Yep, yep, those smaller structures and then a variety of uses.
Yeah, I understand that.
So if this is innocuous enough, cause you're gonna see more of it in five point eight. Uh the next section is uh section two point five point three. You can take a look at the summary there as to what that's, what the change there was all about. I'll put it up on screen here.
Put one on two four. You have one on two four that's highlighted as a revised.
Two four.
Area emission requirements on two six.
Right, so why don't we, that's up on screen now. Turn to that first. Um I didn't, I didn't put this in the summary because it's non-substantive. It's just a, it's just extra words, but it but we thought it was helpful. It's basically saying that the require, the dimensional standards that are in table one, which comes before this. Apply um in the lot coverage standpoint, apply to both structures and non-structural improvements. Cause cause lot coverage is defined that way. It applies to buildings as well as driveways, parking lots, roads and that sort of thing.
Maybe it would be easier going through this. Does that?
Whatever you, whichever way you wanna do it. There are a couple of these little zingers, you know, thrown in that are non-substantive or dependencies, but.
Cause who knows what he might have snuck in there? I mean, there might be something about.
I'm happy to scroll through.
About.
My my word document will advance from each track change to the next, so I'm I'm happy to advance between them. So if we if we do that.
Maggie actually now wants to bring two of her computers in.
Okay.
Yes, right.
So trust Microsoft Word and you can see what I'm doing. I am now advancing to the next change.
All right.
So the next change is in fact where we were headed, two point five point three. That is, oops, sorry, that is in the summary. And there it is. And it's changing out the words land development activity to structures. And it's clarifying, it's it's removing the word signs and school buses with a more general term bus. For for shelters and then adding a sentence that says for sign setbacks, see section five four five. Because there are in fact setbacks for signs. Um and they're contained in the sign section of our regs. Uh Mitch thought that um school bus shelters are not the only bus shelters that might have a problem with a front yard setback. He thought, what about C C T H, you know, bus shelters? And I thought, well, that makes a lot of sense. So that's why that was changed. And um the the beginning change there from land development activity to structures. Um is in recognition that our land development definition is extremely general. So it covers excavation activities, it covers change of use. And setbacks are not about that. Setbacks are not about, you know, you 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 decided to change your business from this to this. Or you changed a house from a s- single family home to a duplex. Setbacks are all about structures. They apply to buildings. You have to be set back for a certain distance depending on um. A- as long as the structure's above a hundred square feet. So anyways, that's why those clarifications were made. Can I move to the next one?
So they each chose, um we don't have setback restrictions of any kind on driveways.
We do not. You can put a driveway right on your property line or a fence right on your property line. Fences are actually pretty good to put right on your property line. Driveways, not so much, but yeah, we've never.
Unless they're next to a sidewalk and you get hit by the snow block.
Hmm, that's true. That's true too.
Okay.
Not me, but other people.
No, I know the, I know one person in in your neighborhood. Okay, so the next change, nothing up my sleeve. Um is not in the summary, so see, this is a good thing Maggie's hold, you know, keeping me honest. So um this is a note in uh section two point five point five. Which is our section dealing with multiple structures and uses. This is the piece of the regulations that is a another cornerstone of zoning. That says you get one principal building or use per lot in most of town. In the village area, you can do a lot more than that. But if you're just a regular lot uh out there in Heinsburg, uh you can have one house. You can't have two houses. If you wanna have two, you gotta subdivide. So this, I added this note because um as is explained in the accessory section use. Uh our sec- accessory section's part of the regs in five point eight, which we'll get to. Farms and forestry operations are are different and frequently do have multiple principal structures. There's a, there's the farmhouse. There's a giant barn that is four times as big as the farmhouse. They're both principal structures. One is for the business, the other's sort of partly for the business, that being the house, but also for the residential use. And so this just acknowledges that, so that we don't have to have an argument in the future about whether farmer A is allowed to have a house. And three barns uh when it's one principal building per lot, according to this. So if you're okay with that.
Why can't, um normal residents have a house and three barns?
They they can actually. Um and the idea is that those barns are accessory to the the principal building. Being the house. Um but that in a farmer's case, some nitpicker could make the argument that the barn. Where the four hundred had a cattle are is actually the business, the principal building, and how dare they have a house on that lot as well. Who's, what's accessory to what in that situation? All right, so the next section from the summary is the one we just discussed with Russell and Jesse, the contiguous area, which you decided would be okay to eliminate. Um the next change is what's, is the next one in the summary document. So the corner parcel, section of the regs, two point six. Um and the change that's happening here is the elimination of uh a private right of way in the language. Such that a corner parcel is defined as a as a parcel that abuts more than one street, not just a private right of way. If you look at section ten point one, the definition of street includes private right of ways. That are used by more than one dwelling. So a private road is still going to create a corner parcel. So we're not changing the policy here. You are a corner parcel if you abut two roads, public or private. But the reason for the change is A to be more consistent with the use of the word street versus private right of way. But B to um to eliminate the the conundrum that we've had in in our office. Where somebody has a private right of way across someone else's land just for their house. So it's a, it's a private right of way for a single house. It's really just a driveway. And in the past, we've had confusion over whether a a parcel that sits at the corner of a street. And a single, a single driveway within a private right of way constitutes a corner parcel. Um when Peter was here, he made the determination it doesn't, that it has to be a shared private right of way to trigger this. But thi- this cleans that up and clarifies that that's in fact the case. Hopefully, you're, you were good with all of these things, cause you've all, except, with the exception of Marie, you've talked about most of these before. But it's it's been over a year, so I'm sure you had not.
Interesting for me to read the whole thing. So it means that um. If you are actually on a corner lot as defined.
Yep.
The frontage requirements need to be met on both of those two.
Yeah.
Streets.
It's pretty.
Or a banded driveway.
Or you have to, as it says with frontage, one or one of those frontages has to be permanently restricted via deed or terrain. Um so that you can't use it in order to not have to meet the frontage on that side.
What's the practical reason for that?
Uh there are a couple.
If you have enough frontage on a street, say for example.
It's a space, it's a spacing issue. So frontage is often used as a surrogate for uh density of development. And you have frontages to do a couple of things, one of which in traditional Euclidean zoning is just to keep houses a certain. Set distance apart from each other. Um.
You could have a real skinny lot if.
Right, right. So you, if you are a corner lot and you only had to meet the frontage on the private road that came off the town road. You could have a tiny little frontage on the public road and have another house right next to you.
Yes.
Whereas requiring you to have it on both sides keeps your house spaced and your lot spaced from both, in both directions. It also helps to some extent with um driveway curb cuts and keeping them a certain distance apart for, you know, safety and that sort of thing.
Up by the old pantry shelf?
On Richmond Road?
Were we thinking we were making that a corner lot?
I don't remember that one.
Is it private right of way next to it? Is that?
Yeah, cause you know how they're subdivided.
Oh.
Oh, that's, that that was an issue, uh with, I forget the name of the sub, yeah, but it wasn't Manning that did the subdivision.
Um uh Karen.
Karens.
Karen.
Excellent. See, we knew we put you on this board for a reason, Marie. You remember everybody.
I know most everybody's law in town, I think.
So the Karens did a subdivision there. In that case, um it it is a shared right of way for two lots. So it does, it does create um all of these issues and that's part of the, and it would under this revision still. Um that's one of the reasons they had to do it as a P U D, to get waivers for those sorts of things. None of you know what we're, Dennis and I are talking about.
I remember the pantry shelf.
Uh in that case, I believe your board wrote it into the decision such that it wouldn't. Um but technically, it could, yeah, it could create a front yard setback that didn't exist before. Sorry.
I don't.
You trying to find that property?
I've, I mean, how how is it?
Yeah.
Hmm, so it was, it's this property here. And this was a, this was a a new private right of way that got put in to serve two houses down here. And so created a corner lot here, might have made this a corner lot. There's all sorts of ramifications from that.
Okay, all right.
The, again, the, what what we were just discussing, this change isn't gonna help that situation. It would still be an issue with this change. This change only helps when it's a sin- single access, just a driveway. Only one house is is in that right of way. And if you're okay with that, I'll move to the next one.
Moving on.
Um the next one from the track changes.
Home occupations.
Uh let's see, yes, and in fact, we are, the track changes takes me to that as well. So as you can see from the summary document, many sections were revised with regard to home occupations. The reason is that these are the sections of the regs that define the permitted and conditional uses. And um we don't have to do this, this is not necessary. But I felt that given the changes to section five point eight, which defines home occupations as an accessory use. They no longer need to be listed as a permitted or conditional use in the, in each zoning district. Um think about it. A home occupation is not a principal use of the property. And that's what these lists in the zoning district are really trying to do for the most part, is list all the principal uses that you can do on your property. Are you a farm stand? Are you dead storage? Are you a commercial agricultural operation? Are you a single family home? Home occupations have always been in our list of allowed uses. Um but they don't really need to be. They're not a principal use. You have to live there. And so the the single family home is the principal use. Any home occupation by definition is going to be an accessory use. Um there is one exception, it's the cottage industry, and that's also taken care of in section, the revised section five point eight. So unless you have thoughts on this, you might wanna just make a check mark and think about it again when we get to section five point eight. Just to feel like, make sure you're comfortable with these being deleted from all of the district allowed use lists. So um the next two are similar. So uh customary accessory uses uh uh in these same sections has always been a a an a an allowed use. It's generally been a permitted use in all of our zoning districts. And with this uh, you know, improved section five point eight, it doesn't need to be listed anymore. And again, it doesn't really make sense to list it as as a permitted use in a district because it's not a principal use. Um whereas uh it it is in fact an accessory use to something else. Uh similarly, uh at one point, this was when Dave Blittersdorf was a part of our community. When he was a part owner of uh N R G Systems. We made a change, I think, back when we created the industrial five district that then morphed into the village northeast district. We made a change where we added rooftop solar hot water, rooftop photovoltaics, rooftop wind turbines. And photovoltaic trackers as allowed permitted uses in almost all of our districts. Uh loo- looking back, that was a little silly. Why, we didn't need to do that? Those are all accessory to the structure that they are on the rooftop for. Uh and and so anyways. Except the trackers, exactly. So you'll see again, when we get to section five point eight, it's covered in there. Furthermore, all of these um solar types of technologies, if they're creating electricity. And are connected to the grid, we can't regulate anyways. They're regulated by the Public Service Board. Um photovoltaic trackers, as Joe mentioned, are different. They are standalone things. And so I've added, I've changed it because not every photovoltaic system is a tracker. Most of them aren't in fact anymore. Uh regardless of what all our renewables would like us to, you know, would like us all to install. So um I've added a a new term called solar installation. And provided a a definition, I hope, uh for that. Where did I put it in this one? As a conditional use. In this, in the ag district anyways, I think, I hope, I was consistent about adding it as a conditional use in all of the districts. I know it's in all the districts, uh. So, and this this is just to cover those situations where they are off-grid systems that we do have jurisdiction over. So for example, the the solar installation, trying to think of a nontracker one, do we have any in town that? I don't know that we even have any in town. On their roofs for sure, but like a standalone thick ground mounted system, we're about to have some because the the McGee Hill Road installation got its final approvals and they're they're getting ready to go to construction. So for that system, um, uh, it's it's uh uh connected to the grid, we didn't have purview over it. But if somebody wanted to put up a small, actually there is one, uh, now that I think of it, it's right next to the McGee Hill Road one. I don't think it's a tracker, the neighbor put in a little uh installation in their backyard. Um, and the Frost also did it, right on the corner of Richmond Road near Partridge Hill, they put in a fixed one, anyways. Those are also connected to the grid, no jurisdiction, we don't have to worry about them in zoning. But let's say Andrew Frost and his wife decided to make that off-grid, connect it to batteries in their basement and when the power goes off, they've got their own generating plant. Um, those are not ex- those are not exempt from zoning, so we need to have something in the regs to allow them. And we would have jurisdiction and under these regs, it would it would go through the D R V as a conditional use review. So that's access customary accessory uses have been eliminated in this section, most of the solar stuff eliminated with the exception of this new term. Any questions on those two before I move to bed and breakfasts? So, um, some of you will remember that when we did the rural zoning, we um, added some new uses and clarified some others, and one of the ones we did was bed and breakfasts and more importantly, inns, we created a sort of a new use for that. Previously, uh, the the zoning regulations had a term called tourist homes and very out of date terminology, so when we did the rural zoning, we changed that and said in the ag and the R R two district, you're you're allowed to do a bed and breakfast as a permitted use and you're allowed to do an inn as a conditional use. And we defined bed and breakfast, I think, as four rooms or less and an inn eh wi- within the principal structure. And an inn was, I think, ten rooms or or less and could be in the principal structure and in accessory structures, so we had sort of two tiers. Anyways, when we did that, we were we were so afraid of touching any other part of the regs that we 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 did not make it consistent in the other zoning districts, so we still have tourist homes in some of the other districts like the R R one and Village and so this change walks through each of the districts and just makes it all consistent. We no longer have the term tourist home, it's just bed and breakfast or inn. And then on top of that, in the Village and the Commercial Districts, um, there are additional allowances for just straight ahead hotels, motels, rooming houses, um. Yeah. So there, again, there are a variety of sections that had to be changed to make that all consistent, that's what the change was. I won't scroll through all the examples, but here's one example on the screen from section three point three, this is the R R one district in which bed and breakfast has been added as a permitted use. Um, oops. Tourist homes which do not exceed fifteen guests located in the primary structure has been deleted and replaced with inn.
Less is better.
So if you're okay with that. Obviously, now that you have the printed version and we have time before we finalize this for public hearing and all that, take your time looking through it. If you see something that I said we did that didn't get reflected, feel free to let me know. Um, but moving right along, the next section that the track changes picks up, let's let me just walk through it here and make sure I nothing up my sleeve like Maggie said. Ah, so this, the next one that comes up on track changes is what's in your summary, so at the bottom of page one of the summary, it talks about changes uh regarded to agriculture and forestry uses, section three five, three eight, three nine, three ten, three fifteen. And again, when we did the rural zoning, we added several uses related to commercial ag, commercial forest and accessory uses there too. Um, and we did not go through the rest of the districts and add the same language. We, it was all very specific to the agricultural and rural residential two districts. So I walked through the other districts and added those same allowances. Um, anyways, to the to the districts that are mentioned in those specific sections. So not a whole lot uh of exciting stuff there, the next section that comes up should be reflected on page two of the summary. And this is what you discussed more recently, so hopefully all of you remember this one. Remember, you you talked about all of these changes last year, you talked about a few of the sticky ones earlier this year. And drive-through, drive-up windows was one of those, so m- my recollection of your discussion was, uh we we prohibit rest, we've always prohibited restaurants from having them, cause I guess people didn't wanna have McDonald's drive-throughs. Uh, in the Commercial District, we had sort of an allowance for a drive-through bank. And it was specifically listed that way, I think as a conditional use in the in the in the zoning regs. But in the Village, we just said bank and we didn't clarify whether you could have a drive-through, so there was some intention maybe to have a discrimination there. When you talked about it though, you said, let's just get rid of them, they're just, they're prohibited, um. Correct, so what what this language. So so what this language would do is prohibit them and make any existing one, uh, pre-existing non-conforming. Meaning you could, they could continue to have it, but um, there couldn't be anymore.
People really like the one at Kenny Drugs, I have older people especially than sick people. I really feel I have to speak for them, they real- really like that drive-through. It's not going away. No, I know, but what if another drugstore?
That is.
How would that be fair?
That is the question.
Right.
And I think Dennis, you raised that same issue the last time the board talked about it, so.
You you, are you saying you don't agree with taking it away?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too. I'm doing me another, I'm bored here.
Well darned, she's already trouble.
I hear a lot of people really like, older people like that.
So so Jesse, our one member of the of the intrepid audience asked a question.
Oh, sorry.
Do you wanna say it again, cause they.
I'm just wondering if anyone's discussed what would be the negative aspects of having a drugstore.
It was discussed at length, but I would imagine some of the commissioners who are in favor of prohibiting.
It impedes the pedestrian walkability of the village area and it supports driving.
Tracks from the overall health of the American citizen.
But there are some people who can't walk very well.
Then they should try and walk more.
I'm not walking from my house down to the community bank. Sorry.
We're not asking you to walk from your house, we're just asking you to walk from the parking lot.
And I always do, I don't, I don't need to, I've never used that window personally.
I wouldn't judge you if you said you did.
Part of um, part of what I explained.
This fit to me, it was more of a, more of a density thing, you know, in how we wanted that area to look and what we really wanted to consume with more roadways and
Sure.
That sort of thing.
I get that.
And and the example that I raised when when the commission first talked about this in two thousand sixteen was the Kenny Drugs development, so wh- when that development was first proposed, the developer only had Kenny Drugs as an interested tenant and it was very focused on making sure it all worked for them. And the first proposal, they always wanted a drive-through and we determined that the regs were unclear. So we said, we'll give you the benefit of the doubt, you can have a drive-through. But the moment that that happened, they wanted a slip lane off of one sixteen to be able to get people moving south in the evening to just be able to slide right into the Kennies and not have to turn at an intersection or park on the street, just drive right in and right into the drive-through. And um, the amount of uh space that it took up was a lot. The the potential for pedestrian conflicts of people trying to walk along a sidewalk and having there be a brake and cars zipping in and out and was a problem. Um, it made, in the end, they figured it out, right, and they didn't have a slip lane, that the board, the D R B didn't approve that and they they figured out a way to make it work, it was difficult, it was it was a very, it it made the review of that project much more complicated to figure out, once there, once we re- knew there wasn't gonna be a slip lane right off of one sixteen, how do you get circulation to work in a parking lot so that you can accommodate a drive-through? And it, and so anyways, that was part of the rationale was uh, it it's difficult to to plan those things out. Uh, not to say that they don't get some use.
I've never seen anybody at the window there and I'm very careful when I walk, if I have to park further back to, cause I walk in the drugstore, I don't use the window, but I'm always very nervous there that somebody will come along and I won't see them. Um, I've just heard people talk about it.
Sure, I I, you know, I mean, there could certainly be a ground swell, this is this is sort of an absolute uh quote edict, um. But when you look at what's accessible in our community by vehicle right now, one drugstore.
Two banks.
Two banks. And um, I guess you could call most gas stations drive up, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, although this language specifically specifically exempts, make sure that we don't, we're not thinking of them.
Let's try it, you know, was was also my feeling, in in addition to the density thing and just, um.
It's just people are, like, you keep reading how our population is getting older all the time.
Absolutely, yeah.
And there are people who can't walk, um, it's scary maybe that they're driving, but they are.
But it's, but it's interesting, you know, another, you know.
Reason was, as as Ralph mentioned, the wa- the walkability, it's like putting pedestrians first. Um, and these these places of potential conflict, you know, just looking at the the zebra striping for the crosswalks, but then inviting cars in to, you know, it 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 um so it's it's an interesting kind of conflict and and there's an argument to be made for for both sides and um, you know, not wanting to inconvenience or kill either, you know.
Yeah, no, I I see where you're coming from.
Absolutely, um, and Time will tell, down the road, right?
Yeah, as soon as I turn eighty, yeah.
Get back on the planning commission and.
Clearly, the the intent is not for everyone to walk into town, like Dennis said, right? Most Heinsburgers don't live in the Village, even when the Village is fully built out someday, you know, and it's a bustling, wonderful, vibrant place. Most people will still not live in the Village, uh, so the intent, yeah, just you Dennis, the intent is that when somebody does drive into the Village, which they always will, that that they would park at at either a regular space or a or a disabled space very close to the entrance and conduct their business with the merchant um that way, as opposed to never getting out of their car. Um, so there's definitely some pros and cons, uh, do you wanna, the question, my question is, is there still a majority that supports this, if not, then it's easy to get rid of. Um, if there is, do you wanna, do you wanna float it and make sure the public understands when you go to a public hearing that this is sort of a an edict and and you are interested in hearing their opinion as to whether this is a dumb idea or a great idea?
No, I I float it still, I I don't uh, I have a harder opinion, but um, I don't think.
No, i- i- and um, like Marie did, it it's good to he- to
Yeah.
Put things out there and maybe somebody has another reason which is um equally good, maybe there's a type of store that we haven't thought of that it's, you know, um.
I'm in favor of this, but I'm also in favor of being as open as we can be, I know we're done, I mean, that's part of a public hearing.
Right.
I mean, we're we're not far away from drone deliveries, so you know.
True.
Uh, drive-throughs may be completely obsolete, they're very short period of time.
In which case, what a waste of pavement.
Yeah.
Right. No, and that's true too, good point.
Yeah, the only counterpoint is that as 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 much of a pain as that, the development on the screen was, I'm showing what I saw on Maggie's screen here the the Kenny Drugs development area, um, in the end, when you look at what that drive-through actually occupies in terms of space, it's not a lot, right, it's this little area right here. So you need a, you need an exit and you need a little bit more pavement to get a reasonable entrance into it.
It's well designed.
But it worked out, I think it worked out, it's not obtrusive, it doesn't appear to put pedestrians in peril. In part though, because there's nothing happening to the north, right, this is all uh wetland and never gonna be developed. Uh, so, you know, if there were pedestrians wanting to access this part of the property, that drive-through might be more problematic.
Well, I'm glad it's on the back.
Yeah, I I, it worked.
And and the fact is, it it's so tight around there that nobody's driving too too fast, it's not that I've that I've seen.
And it isn't especially attractive to look at, that's why I think it's nice if it's on the back.
Yeah, I I didn't, I don't think we've talked about that, but in general, drive-throughs are just not attractive.
I don't think they are.
Even the bank ones where the banks can spend some money on interesting architecture, they still all have their little open closed neon, you know, L E D lights and it's just not a, yeah. So am I hearing consensus to keep it in and ge- engage the public reaction to this, with the understanding that there are at least two commissioners that don't think it should be?
I can think of somebody who'll probably speak up about it.
Invite him to the meeting.
Cause that person had a real upset about the the restaurant, Heinsburg Public House.
Oh, I know the person of what you speak, yes.
We'll see.
I I think that person was more aggrieved at the how far they had to walk to get to the front entrance. The nice thing about Kennies is that the 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 disabled parking is right next to the front door.
Yep.
So and as well as the bakery, so.
So when you float it, just make sure people know that this is not going away.
Yeah, I think that'll be key is to say, we have three drive-throughs today, two banks and one pharmacy. We have another pharmacy that's been approved and is in court, that would be the pharmacy in Hanford and that doesn't have a drive-through. Um, all of those projects, you know, are not gonna be affected by this, but if you were hoping to have a third drive, you know, pharmacy with a drive-through or um a third bank or a restaurant someday or that with a drive-through or. Yeah, Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through. They did.
They are gonna have a pharmacy.
They are gonna have a pharmacy and they did, they did want a drive-through and they they removed it not because of anything we're talking about here, but just of their own accord.
Is this the
Well, they removed.
The, I find that the the parking
In uh, in the main lot here.
Yeah, is, it's tight.
Yes.
Yes, Marie says that often too.
Alex hears that for me frequently.
Okay.
It meets, it meets the standards though.
So tight, I'm I'm surprised, I don't wonder, I'm surprised I haven't been hit there.
I know it, yeah.
What is that dimension, sixty-five feet?
It's very tight.
Um.
Is it still twenty, twenty-five, twenty?
I think it's, I think the spaces are eighteen feet deep and the, and it's twenty you know, but oh, I'll have to measure, I'm not sure if it's twenty or twenty-four feet.
Drive-through there where that could, the whole building could have moved north.
And honestly, it doesn't seem as tight to me on this end as it does right down there.
It's just this section, right?
Cause there's no egress, there's no way to get out, yeah, it's a dead end, if if there there's not a stop there.
Right, so if all these parking spots are full, including the the disabled ones, then there's not much room to navigate, whereas in all these spots, there's constant flow through and similarly here.
It's interesting to me that um this, right here, in most situations, for this person to back up like this.
Yeah.
This is usually required to be deeper.
Right.
I would have.
But for the majority of the spaces, you're not there, you're somewhere in here and to back up, take this car for example. That car should be able to.
Really can't turn that well there.
That's what I'm saying.
But you know what I mean, this. But you know what I mean, this, this car, the cars that you see here, at least just by the, by eyeballing it, should have no problem.
It's very hard for me to turn like my truck into that.
Could, cause you're not, you're not one of those typical cars, yeah. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn off the pretty photo and go to the next item on the, on the list here. Um, before this completely breaks down, let's see here, the next track changes, next thing that track changes thinks is a change. Um. I think is later on your list, but it pops up here, so, I'll, I'll mention it, so I'm in, for reference, I'm on page twenty-five. And this is the list of allowed uses for the, you just have to go back a ways to find it, for the Village District. So, the, under conditional uses in the Village District, page twenty-five, um. We, we've, we have this category of use called motor vehicle service and repair facilities, and then there are several special conditions. For those facilities, um, it's been under zoning for a long time. Um, this is a, this is an artifact of the past, when all gas stations were service stations. And they haven't been for a very long time, two of our three gas stations are not service stations. So, it's fine, under our current regs, if you look in the definitions of, definition of gas stations, it says. It's a motor vehicle service facility, and if you look at the definition of motor vehicle service and repair facilities, it includes, you know, the sale of gas. But, um, what I've done is I've added a new, a new use called gas, or not a new use. I've add, I've added the gas station use separately to this section, and I've changed the two definitions in the back of the regs to reflect the fact that. You can have a service station without gas, and you can have a gas station without servicing vehicles. And so, this is not a substantive change, this is just clarification really, um, but it was the next track changes, so, you just saw it. You'll see it again in the definition section when we get there, not tonight, but. So, the next item, just walking down. The list, we've already talked about solar installations and accessory apartments, bed and breakfasts.
So I noticed you added.
Oh, found another one.
Um, solar installs to, conditional, okay, it's a conditional use in the village.
Yeah, Joe, do me a favor if you would, uh, either, not, maybe not now, but, or make a mental note, check that. Make sure I put it in conditional for all the districts, I'll make a note to do the same, I shouldn't make you do that, but, uh, I know I added it everywhere, but. Now that you're saying that, it makes me nervous that I maybe didn't do it consistently as a conditional use, I think I did. Check conditional use in all districts. Okay, so, moving right along, I'm gonna get through, make sure there's nothing else that I snuck in here. Um, alright, so I think I did sneak this one in, on your summary, oh no, I didn't, it's, it is the next item on your summary. So the next item on your summary is section three eight five, uh, three point eight point five, public utilities and transmission lines. And this is an allowed use in several of our districts, uh, conditional use. Um, we don't, we can't regulate substations and transmission lines, it's, we're not, we're, we're specifically prohibited from that. That's what the Public Service Board does, so I just deleted it. Um, the next one, on your summary is, uh, that same section, there's this, this, uh, common use type called. It's a, it was a strange use type, but it says without regard to height limitations, and then it lists a bunch of things. Some of which we can't regulate again, but, um, rather than, uh, picking and choosing. Uh, what I did was simply make the commercial district consistent with all the other districts. I don't know why, but the commercial district, in the commercial district, this use has always been worded slightly differently. Uh, so, what you see in the strikeouts on page thirty-two and thirty-three is what it's always said for the commercial district, which is. Radio and television antennae, windmills and other wind instruments. In every other district, it's what, it's what the proposed additional new language is, which is those things as well as. Um, public utility towers, high voltage transmission lines, substations. So I guess the things that we can't regulate anyways, but I just wanted to make it consistent. If you want me to go one step further and actually continue to delete some of the things that we can't regulate, I can, but. This was housekeeping, so I was trying to, you know, just do one thing at a time.
I mean, some, sometimes I think it's good to have those in there so people realize that. And, okay, railroads, that's a low possibility that somebody's gonna put a railroad through here, but, you know, public utility towers. You know, high voltage transmission lines, I mean, that is, you know, that is the cost of twenty-first century life, it, it happens, and. If it's not in the reg, somebody can read that and get the impression that, oh, it's not there, it's not approved, I think it's better to keep it there, even though we can't.
Yeah, it's not in our regulatory purview, but, okay. Um, so, that was the next item on your summary, and Joe, I'm just gonna keep rambling until you cut me off, it's eight fifty.
I don't know, do people want cake or not?
Um, shouldn't we get down at least to two whole pages? Or is that too?
Okay, so, if we continue, the next item on your summary is zoning permits for demolition of new. For demolition and for new businesses, so I'll walk through the track change just to make sure there's nothing else sneaky that I put in before that. Takes a while to get through all these zoning districts with all the same changes, tourist homes, bear with me for a moment. Solar installations. Oh, I did find one, okay, so, see, it's good that Maggie's keeping me honest, um, in the industrial three district. This is the cheese plant, the district that is largely the cheese plant. On page, if you're doing your page numbers, page thirty-nine, in the purpose statement for this district. Uh, as you can see on the screen, this paragraph says, it talks about the fact that, um. This district has, is extensively developed and lacks any formal stormwater infrastructure, or very little anyways. And so, previously the reg said, any new development that adds to lot coverage shall explore stormwater treatment options. And, one of the things that's happening in the definition section of the regs is to, is to clarify the difference between lot coverage. And impervious surface, um, lot coverage excludes sidewalks. And patios and other pedestrian related stuff. Um, impervious surface includes those things, and so, this change is to make sure that if, if the town, for example, takes over that. Road, which we wanna do someday, that would be the cheese plant's driveway, and we, um. And we decide to put in a sidewalk, we are adding impervious surface, we are not adding lot coverage, but we should deal with the stormwater runoff. Um, and this, this would require that. And, I'm about to lose my battery on the laptop, so, excuse me for a moment while I go grab a charging port.
So you don't need a zoning permit, sorry, I'm going back with you guys.
The demolish, uh, the, um.
To demolish a principal structure in the Village District?
Is that only if it's historical? I'm thinking you did.
If it's historic, you do need a permit, but you can demolish a building in the Village District without a zone permit. Is that correct?
It's, yeah, I, I picked up on that too, and I didn't think that you could, but.
As long as it's not protected building.
Not protected.
Well, we've had a case where someone did it.
Not normally.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, didn't they, they tore down this barn?
The barn, yeah. Uh, next to the Goldsmith's, was it, was it, or two?
Well, next to the new condos over here.
Yeah, kind of behind the Goldsmith's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
At the duplex?
I think the bank owned the house, and actually they tore it down.
Correct, in front of, of the town, by the townhouses that are on Silver Street.
I think the folks that, uh, wanted to tear down the one next to the Goldsmith's came in and talked to us, the DRB.
That was the small shed, right? And we, I think they okayed that.
Permit, but they did okay.
The house is on the market for sale and it wasn't even on a few days and it's gone.
What's, which one's that?
The duplex, it's actually the first, I don't know why that's called Silver Street there, the white one, that went with the barn you're talking about. It, it's a two-family home, and it was on the market for sale for just a couple of days and then it disappeared, so I don't know if it's under contract.
It's, 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 yeah, it's gonna close in July.
Yeah, I'm, that's what I figured, I don't know why that's called Silver Street there, seems like it should be one sixteen. But anyway, I guess maybe because the road's been changed by the state.
It's an intersection, it's kinda right where it is, so.
Yeah, just, to me, it seems like it should be one sixteen, but they didn't ask me.
You can get more for the house, I think, so.
There you go, yeah, used to be, that was the hierarchy.
So Alex, I did go back one.
Okay, where'd you, where'd you find?
Well, I, I'm just curious about. Validation, verification, you're not allowed to, you don't need a permit, a zoning permit. To demolish a principal structure in the Village District, is that correct?
Under our current regulations, you do.
Yes.
And that's what we're proposing to delete, because in addition to requiring a zoning permit. If you wanna demolish a principal structure or a barn that was built before nineteen forty. You need conditional use approval from the Development Review Board. That's the, that's the, that's the, the hook that we wanna keep, is your historic structure. Um, come and talk to us before you take it down. This requirement to get a zoning permit to just take down a structure in the Village District, you never mind the larger growth area. I, I'm not sure that we've ever issued, at least while Peter and I were here, or while Peter was here, and since I've been here. Uh, I don't think we've ever issued a zoning permit for the demolition of a structure that didn't also already go through the DRB process. Because it was historic, so, this, for example, would require, um, can somebody think of a. Newish structure that was built in the, well, let's say, uh, on Green Street. So, that street, uh, you know, was done relatively recently, there are two single-family homes at the front end, and then there are the apartments that. Affordable apartments that got, got built behind them, um, if one of those homes wanted to be demolished and they wanted to rebuild it as something else. Um, the current regs would require them to get a zoning permit for it. What's proposed is to say, no, you don't need a zoning permit, it's not a historic structure, w- we don't care if you take it down, go ahead. Frankly, getting a zoning permit doesn't, doesn't give the zoning administrator the ability to say. No, you can't take it down anyway, it's just a, um, a bookkeeping sort of mechanism to ensure that there's a piece of paper to track. The fact that the building disappeared, um, and we don't do that bookkeeping. Anywhere else in town, so I'm not sure why we would be doing it in the village, uh, for nonhistoric structures, you know.
Plus you would need a permit to, to rebuild, to build something.
Right, if, if it was gonna be replaced, we would have the bookkeeping, cause we'd know about the new structure, if it were to be just demolished. And like the minor house here next to this building was, and never replaced, we wouldn't have the bookkeeping. Unless it was a historic structure, which the minor house was, and went through the conditional use re- review, so it's really just about newer structures. And whether you want to have bookkeeping for the fact that they blinked out of existence or not, but, we didn't. When Peter was here, and Mitch as well, I just didn't think that it was necessary.
What's our, just remind me, what's our historic, what are we, how do we define historic buildings?
Nineteen forty.
So it's by a date, not by a.
Not by.
It's older than forty years or something.
Not by a particular form of architecture, or of a certain period, or.
This data before.
Yep, yep, principal structure or barn.
I guess, I, I don't quite know what I'm talking about, so bear with me, but, um, as you often do, um. Sometimes you'll see in communities sort of, uh, I don't think ours is one of them, but there's a, almost a. A kind of strategy, uh, it's cynical, um, a sort of structure removal. And non-replacement, um, and I guess I'm wondering. Um, do we wanna discourage that practice? I mean, it's not something that we perhaps see. In great abundance in our town, but you certainly see it in some communities, um, sometimes it's due to the. Economic, uh, straits of a community, um, you know, buildings, um. And just as we talk about density and the virtue of that to some degree, at least in terms of improving. Um, you can, you can see the sort of piecemeal, piecemeal removal of certain structures within a community. At some point reaches, uh, you know, it's like the teeth in your mouth, you know, at some point it is no longer functioning.
Can, can you give an example of, of a, can you give her that?
You know, there are some, uh.
That's what I was thinking.
Did you say Detroit? Detroit, yeah, they took away whole, whole blocks.
In other words, uh, making it convenient or simple to remove a structure just because it wasn't built before nineteen forty, I'm not sure is prudent.
For, for what purpose? Are we talking abandoned structures, or?
Uh, yeah, there's a, there's a tendency to sort of just abandon and let them go derelict. And then all of a sudden, uh, you know, it's like the building across the street, at some point it reaches. A time when clearly it's no longer viable to resuscitate it. And I'm just thinking that, you know, for a village to be a village, and granted, most of these structures do predate nineteen forty. Um, but even the newer portions of our community, um, for it to be a village requires a certain proximity. And to just be able to remove at will, um, I'm not sure if something. Again, I, I, I say this, it sounds like I'm more convincing maybe than I should be.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I was asking for, for, you know, more local examples.
Example, okay.
I can think of one, well, it's not down now, though, but it would, if it's down, it's gonna look really empty over there. Is what the building that's been condemned that has the asphalt siding on, outside, um, and. If once, I mean, it isn't attractive to look at, but it is a placeholder, um, and once that's, if it were down, that lot would look very. Large and empty, I think what you're saying, though, that it's unlikely that that's gonna have, what you're talking about in Chittenden County. I just don't see that happening.
Without replacements or.
Yeah, I really don't, I mean, I could go to Addison County, very possible, but Chittenden County, it just seems like. It's s- so vibrant.
And, and the fact is, I, I mean, I think of, um, and, and they, they are primarily historical structures in, in the, in this. You know, village center here, but, um, thinking of, um. You know, the, the, the natural variation in ages and, and style. That we see in, in historic main streets and historic neighborhoods. That, there's a value to that, and, you know, it's a little hard to imagine in a neighborhood like Creekside, you know. Where you have the cookie cutter houses, and if one were to, you know, something to happen to one, and. If it were to be replaced with something that offered a little more variety, that over the years, that could be a, could be a good thing. With the newer.
Yeah, I don't, I think when you get into replacement, that's one thing, but imagine yourself again in Creekside. And say, for example, Fred has a house next door that he buys and he tears down to increase his yard size.
Right.
Okay?
That could be no good.
Um, that's really starting to change the complexion of that neighborhood, maybe somewhat argue for the better, but, um.
So a couple administrative things that you have to remember, cause you're talking a broad policy level thing, which is good, that's what you are, the policy board, but, um. Right now, our regulations read that if you do abandon the structure, you have to take it down. So, we're, we're actually, as a community, are on the other side of that, and, uh. So we, if you, if that's an important sort of policy, we should change our abandonment section of the regs, because right now it says that. If you've abandoned the house, you gotta remove it within a specified period of time. We've had some pretty lax zoning enforcement on that front, and, uh, and I'm hoping to change that, but.
Likely they can't afford to tear it down.
Not, not the two I'm thinking of.
Well, yeah, we don't have to go into specifics, but that may or may not be the case, depending on the owner. Anyway, so that's one thing, the other thing is that, again, right now, the policy that, uh, or the regulation that we'd be changing. If we were to not change it, it does not accomplish what you're talking about, all it does is say you need a permit to demolish the structure. Doesn't give standard. All it does is say you need a permit to demolish a structure. It doesn't give standards upon which that permit could be denied.
Right.
Which means the zoning administrator would have no choice but to issue the permit based on an application saying, I would like to take down this house. So again, if you wanna go in that direction, we need to do more work than just a housekeeping cleanup, uh, because right now our regs actually work against that to some degree.
I mean, thinking about this, there there's certainly the reason of of community aesthetic to to worry about, um, in in a demolition process, but there there may be a a nearer term thing where we actually want people to get a permit, and that's, you know, that's health and safety concerns in an area where it is dense, you know, there are small setbacks. You know, and we wanna make sure that no matter what that demolition is, that it's, you know, it's carried out within the property lines, it's carried out in a safe manner. Um, you know, that's not necessarily a requirement today. You just go in and say, I wanna destroy something and they they hand you a permit, but i- it seems to me like there should be, you know, some requirements on that permit. You know, what's expected.
In the same way that we might have requirements in a subdivision, not necessarily just a straight zoning permit for blasting to, you know, get a foundation in where we require, as one of our boilerplates, that, you know, neighbors get noticed, there's certain hours, that sort of thing. I haven't thought of it from that perspective.
And people do come in and ask.
Oh, sure.
Well, I mean, I've heard many times people come in and ask, well, do I need a permit to tear something down? So it must be maybe in other towns that 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 exists, I'm guessing.
Well, remember, we also get people coming and say, I'm building a house, when does the inspector come inspect my electrical work, my plumbing?
We get that, that's true.
Vermont, that doesn't happen.
Right, true.
The only other benefit I see also is is the posting and the notification in the town, right, so.
So the neighbors all of a sudden know.
So you say, I'm tearing the house down, you say, fine, here you go, you can go tear it down, but you've gotta post it. So if I'm the guy walking around my neighborhood, I'm like, he's gonna rip down his house? You know, I probably can't do anything, but it's good to know, you know, for a couple of reasons. One, I could raise my hand and say that thing's covered in asbestos, maybe we should do something. I don't know, but then that's just, that's a noisy neighbor type of language, I don't know.
I think I think to a large extent in a rural community, who the hell cares, right? I'm on my ten acres, I'm taking down my house, or I'm taking down a barn, what do you care? You're my neighbor, you can't see it. I think Joe's got a really good point. I hadn't thought about it from that perspective, that in a densely populated area where houses are very close to each other, maybe the neighbor, I don't know, but just from just from what you said, you know, but but we may wanna write something more.
Oh, yeah.
In in terms of adding some standards or some additional submission requirements? Cause normally a zoning permit is your name, your address, your contact information, what you're gonna do, and usually it's to build a structure. So it's like, wh- where's the structure, how far away from the setbacks? Um, with a demolition, it's sort of, maybe we would get similar information, we might want some additional, like, is there any hazardous material present?
Yeah, that's my only, that's, you raised a good point, I'm thinking, cause I live in the denser part of town, and I'm like, how do I know, you know, let's say it's built newer than the the historic buildings and it's, I don't know, built with asbestos or lead paint now I know is the big thing, but, you know what I mean?
Well, ju- I mean, just think about, think about like a sewer connection, right, they're gonna knock down a building in ranges, so they're gonna leave an open pipe in the basement. Yeah, it's gonna backflow, so, you know, hot, you know, all those things.
It also can be, I have a relative who it became an issue with, not around here, where a house was being torn down and but they didn't do it in a timely fashion, and the dumpsters were out there all the time sitting, and they started having rat problems. There are things that can happen if they don't do it according to some set of rules.
Right, and if there's no permit issued, then there's no real enforcement mechanism for the zoning officer to come and say, you're in violation, you need to clean this up, or, I I really hadn't thought about it from that perspective. Uh, yeah, so.
I guess I think this one's worth examining.
Well, yeah, well, maybe you oughta stew on that a little bit, and at your next meeting, give me some direction, is, cause it's easy to to just not delete it, but it sounds like maybe you wanna do more than just not delete it. You might wanna keep it and flesh it out a little bit. So if you have some ideas on how you'd like that done, ponder them between now and two weeks.
There was one word in there that, um, confused me a little bit, and maybe you guys know. The difference between abandonment and neglect, what like what is, you know, if I have a building that I just don't do anything to for forty years and it's rotting and it's falling down versus abandonment, is abandonment that no one's living on the property that one of those buildings is on?
Yeah, the section that deals with abandonment in our regs, I can flip to it here on screen. Cause I I did get our last zoning administrator, Mitch, onto abandoned structures. He didn't have a lot of success with the ones that I pointed out needed to be contacted, and so our new zoning administrator will be doing that too when she has some time. This is the section on abandonment. Um, it it says within one year after abandonment, uh, or if it's been destroyed for some reason, uh, that you have to remove the materials and return the site. Let me look and see if in section ten point one we define abandonment. I I don't think we do. Which might be a good, uh, you may have just identified another good housekeeping changes to actually introduce a definition of abandonment.
I mean, I can, I can, I can see. The difference, I mean, to me abandonment is you're no longer pursuing a use either allowed or conditional, I mean, um. And neglect is, yeah, the use continues, you're just not keeping up your property.
Peter, our our longtime zoning administrator prior to the last two, um, did have an issue with that. Uh, and he felt very reluctant to pursue any of these structures that had been abandoned because he felt like the moment he told the person that he was declaring it abandoned and the clock was started, all they'd have to do is go hammer a nail, and it was no longer abandoned, they were doing work on it, and he said, so what's the point? Th- that's a little bit of a cop out, cause I know of at least one structure on one sixteen that is very hard to see in the summertime, but in fact is a roof caved in, the whole, you know, there's nobody doing anything on that housing for a lot of years. Um, that's clearly an abandoned structure and oughta be removed.
But it's not a separate lot either, so there's issues there, I think. It's on the lot with another house.
It's an interesting one, but it's clearly an abandoned structure.
What you're saying, you need a permit for an abandoned structure, but you do not for a building in use. So if the person went up and put a nail in the abandoned structure, they wouldn't need a permit to take it down?
No, so no, ma- now, let me clear that up. Um, what this section requires is that if it's deemed abandoned, you have to get rid of that. You don't need a permit to get rid of it, but you have to get rid of it, and you have a certain time horizon to do that.
And what happens if you don't?
The section that we were discussing prior says that if you're in the village district, not the rest of town, but just the village district, and you wanna take down a structure, you need a permit to do that. So they're they're slightly different. What happens if you don't? Um, you're you're in violation of zoning and the town, the zoning administrator can find you in violation and then find, start accruing if the select board wants to take it to court. I I, in my fifteen years, we haven't, uh, we haven't done that to anybody. I don't think the zoning administrators ever made a determination that something was abandoned, even though we have abandoned. Yeah, there is one on the Gilman Road, and I don't know if abandonment was officially declared or if it was more, um.
Didn't that get torn down?
No.
I thought they were doing something over there, I saw.
Agreement, but it's not happened that way.
We won't go there tonight, but.
But it's just an example.
If anyone wants to talk offline about that property, I'd be happy to give you the scoop.
Do we have anything around derelict? And and I say that only because you mentioned like the house on, I don't know, the house on one sixteen with the roof caving in, but it's on a lot where they have a primary residence house, let's say. So it's like, well, that's an accessory, it's a barn, it's caving in, eh. Do we have anything on what you need to do with that?
With a.
Do you just sit there and let it rot and fall in?
So this abandonment section talks about abandonment of any structure, chicken coop, barn, house.
But is it abandoned if I'm still using it? If, let's say I'm using it as, I, okay, use it as a storage shed.
No, no, if you're still using it and you don't mind that the rain is coming in the roof, then it's not abandoned, absolutely not. But but the structure I'm referring to, a one sixteen, which you're gonna try to find now, right, if you don't know what a property is. Is, there's nobody using that, they haven't for probably a long time.
So, yeah, but we don't care about like safety standards of it falling down on somebody.
So let me be clear, it's not that we don't care, it's that, it's that Heinsberg zoning history has not introduced anything into the regs to deal with the upkeep of property. We we have stuff in the regs with, about the upkeep of signs.
But not long.
Um, we don't have anything about the upkeep of structures.
Okay.
So bookmark this as something to come back to in the future when we finished every single other project that's in front of our noses.
Well, and I do think that Jesse's question, abandonment definition might be good. Okay, so where were we? We were on, uh, section four point one, I believe. Uh, which is the section that deals with zoning permits. So Mitch had a good time reviewing this one. And I would actually love to make a lot more changes to this section, but I restrained myself, cause again, we have limited time and energy, and this is not a, uh, this is not a rewrite of the zoning, this is targeted housekeeping changes. So beyond the demolition of a principal structure in the village, um, we added a a new, uh, action that requires a zoning permit, this is number eight. Uh, that's that's underlined, establishes a new business in an existing structure, even if the previous use is of the same type as the new business. So what we've been telling new businesses that come to town is, hey, you just moved into the Obashan Plaza and you took over where, um, the Heinsberg Family Health Center was, you wonderful hair salon where I get my haircut. Um, you're, uh, there was already, there's already approval for a site plan for that property. There was already a business in that space, um, but you're a new business, and so we want you to get a zoning permit. We charge the minimum miscellaneous zoning permit fee of thirty five bucks, and we say, and when they say, why do I need a zoning permit? We say, so that we know that you're here, and so we have an opportunity to make sure that what your business is gonna do will conform as far as we can tell to the approved site plan, um, the approved use of the property. What we wouldn't wanna see happen is for a Dunkin' Donuts to replace, um, the Chinese food place and and somehow get a drive-through or something, and have ten times the business and traffic, even though it's a restaurant use, and overwhelm that site without ever having to go through a permitting process. And and a lay, what would happen in that situation? So here's what would happen. Dunkin' Donuts would move in, they would do ten times the business, the parking lot would be over full, uh, the traffic light and the access to the Obashan Plaza would be, we'd start seeing accidents. Eventually, we'd get complaints, the zoning administrator would have to find them in violation of the site plan approval because there's not, you know, they don't have enough parking, traffic flow and all that. And we would have had an established business that we now had to pursue a violation about. That's not a situation we wanna be in. By requiring new businesses to just get a simple change of use zoning permit, we can at least talk to them upfront and say, whoa, Dunkin' Donuts, wait a minute, like, you're not, you clearly aren't gonna be consistent with the existing approvals. Um, I'm not giving you this zoning permit, go talk to the DRB first and amend your site plan. So that's, that's why this is in here. It's been our practice to require that, the zoning hasn't clearly said that we could, so this would bless that.
So, new businesses moving into the energy building, new businesses.
It happens most often in these plazas, right? So the Obashan Plaza and the Village Center Plaza on Mechanicsville Road, uh, business moves out, a new one moves in, we try to make it painless for them, but we would like to require that they come and talk to us and get a simple change of use permit.
Sounds good.
That costs thirty five bucks.
Thirty five bucks.
Okay, so moving along, um, I think it's the very next next paragraph. Uh, yes, projects with DRB approval, it's in that same summary item. So section four point one point two in the middle of the screen here, uh, has always said that you don't need a zoning permit um, if it's a transfer or division of land that the development review board has already approved, i.e. a subdivision. That you don't have to get approved from the DRB and then get a separate zoning permit for it. So, um, I wanted to expand that to say that whenever the DRB approves something that doesn't involve building a new structure, you don't need a zoning permit. So for example, um, uh, well, I gave some examples here, site plan review. Somebody comes in and says, Lampman's comes in and says, I've got these couple more parking spaces, I would like to add those to my site plan. It goes in front of the DRB, they do their magic, they issue an approval. Um, technically, that's land development, and under our, under our definitions, that would also require a zoning permit. But it seems redundant to have them go through a public hearing, get an approval from a board, and then ha- get an administrative permit for the very same thing. Similarly, uh, development on a private right of way is something the DRB approves that doesn't involve any new buildings necessarily. Um, uh, conditional use for work in a stream buffer, there there are a few things, not a lot, but a few things that the board does that the zoning administrator doesn't need to rubber stamp.
Okay, so so a question then, so, um, somebody comes before the board to get an approval, the abutters are notified, they come to the DRB, they get their approval. With this language, they they don't need to get a permit, and the permit is the thing that hangs on the post outside the property, you know?
Ah, so when when they come to in front of the DRB, um, we're required to notify neighbors and post, post the fact that we.
It's normally a butters.
Right, and we post a notice at the nearest, on the property at the nearest public road, so.
Right.
All of that notification that we would do for a zoning permit happens as a part of the DRB.
As long as it still happens.
It does, yep. That's our, that's, yep, mhm.
So what does that document say then?
Which document?
I mean, the thing that gets posted always does.
By the DRB.
Building permit or zoning permit.
So I got one hanging right now, it's my name, my address. Z on it.
What I'm building.
And it says, uh, you know, applicant's name, their address, and what it is they're getting a zoning permit for. Like new shed, addition to the house, whatever. Um, when the DRB is holding a hearing, um, can't remember if Mitch does a big Z or if he does an H or, well, it's got another red something on it. And it says applicant name, uh, when the hearing is and what it's for, you know, like subdivision or site plan interview or whatever.
Okay, just a detail.
Yep. Yeah, the notification is basically the same. Actually, it's better in the DRB's case, cause with a zoning permit, you don't notify the butters by mail, you just post a notice on the property and neighbors have to figure it out based on driving by the the posted notice.
Yeah, it works, they read, ask questions.
You got a zoning permit recently, didn't you, Mr. Cherry?
Yeah, it works.
That big, I like the Z.
Yes.
I'm glad when you started doing, was it Peter who started?
It was not Peter, no, that was.
I really like it.
That was a Mitch innovation, we'll give all credit to Mitch.
Okay, sorry, he deserves it.
Okay, so moving along, let's see, I think we're halfway down the second page.
We're we're closing it on nine thirty.
One more, let's do one more.
Okay, I think we're leaving the zoning permit section, let me see here. Bye, Jesse.
You almost made it to cheesecake, Jeff.
Um. Why am I not seeing that?
The site plan and use standards?
It's four two and four three, my computer jumped past it for some reason.
Four point two point four, is that what you're looking for?
Yep. So forget my, forget my computer, jump to that section of the regs, my track changes had a little hiccup.
There you are.
Okay, so, um, this is not a change of any substance. Um, if you read what's underneath the strikeouts, it says basically the same thing as what the underlying new version says, it just, hopefully the new version says it's a little more eas- it's more easy, it's, uh, easier to understand. Previously, if you were undergoing conditional use review, we would wrap in the site plan standards. Um, you would not need a separate site plan approval, and it would be a combined review for both of those things. So basically, anytime you're in for conditional use, we were gonna look at the site plan standards too. That's where all the landscaping stuff is in the site plan. So, um, this just says it in slightly different words and clarifies that there's gonna be a single decision issued by the board. So not a lot to see there. If you scroll down to section four point three, um, it reiterates that in the last sentence. But what it also does is that it changes the way we talk about what requires site plan to to mirror, um, state statute. Instead of what's under the strikeouts, uh, which is, I don't know who dreamt that up. Instead of what's under the strikeouts, uh, which is, I don't know who dreamt that up, it, it, if you read what's under the strikeouts, it, it's sort of like somebody was trying to imagine every possible type of development that might require site plan. Instead of the way the statute is written, which says anything other than single-family homes and duplexes need site plan. So that's the all, that's what's happening there, is it, it's just a wording change to better reflect.
Okay.
Statue.
And then do that, I'm into something that's black, but you're saying minor revisions under, do you have a, a definition for what a minor revision is? Or is that up to the zoning administrator? I'm a, a little off the beaten path.
No, I know where you are, um.
Four point three point one.
It is up to the zoning administrator, it's a discretionary decision.
He issues discretion.
What it does say is that, um, it can't be a substantive change to a finding of fact. Uh, but other than, beyond that, uh, the zoning administrator can decide whether it's a minor change that the zoning administrator can approve on a site plan, or whether it, it's a major change that gets kicked to the board. Okay, so, moving right along, the next section, um, which is listed in the summary, section four, three, four, there's a couple of added references to, um, standards that, that people going through site plan need to also refer to. No new policy here, they would have had to have complied with section five twenty-nine and five twenty-three anyway, it's just, it's just putting it in this section, so people know where to look. And the next change on your summary is four, three, eight, number two B. Um, this is landscaping standards, still in the site plan review section, and, um, this has been a bone of contention for our tree warden for a long time, and some of the landscapers in town who have watched developments happen and not pay enough attention to the, to the dirt and the soil preparation, so we're trying to do that with this addition.
Especially in.
In the village.
Where they clay soil.
And in the village growth area, where it's, there's more dense development and closer sidewalks, it's really, really important. It's hard to police, but it's still important to say it and try to get it done.
So instead of that kind of wording, Alex, that's the only, I would say, adequate soil volume, composition, and treatment shall be required, rather than shall be insured.
Okay. That's an easy thing to change.
Or is required.
Well, everyone likes shall, because it's such a legalistic, means you must do it word, but shall be required is fine.
Works for me.
And I can make that change right now, there.
So, um, I, I noticed you updated clause F two as well, the new F, and kind of a question there.
Yes.
All right, so, so hypothetical, um, I come in with a site plan, it has a, has planting documented in it, um, planting say, I'm gonna put in X number of trees that are this height, right? And we expect them to come to maturity in five or ten years, whatever it is. Okay, so, I put them in, um, I don't maintain them well, three years on, three of the ten trees are dead, seven of the other ten trees have actually, you know, been on their own, they've, they've done well, they've, they've grown, you know, they, they've doubled in height. Okay, what's required for me to put in new trees for the three that died? The original height is agreed to plan?
Mm-hmm.
Or, or the height plus, like, double the height, because?
Yeah, ge- generally, the, it, what we, the information we've gotten from our tree warden is, um, where, where it would be nice to plant really big trees, and, and, and see results sooner, it's, it's very much the opposite. If you plant trees larger than what nurseries typically sell, um, or, or even trees at the larger end of what they sell, um.
Risky.
It's risky, and the, the growth is, is, uh, less than in the younger trees, and so that they will even themselves out over a number of years in any case. The younger trees will grow faster, but the chances for a larger tree to succumb are much greater. Uh, and so Paul Wizerak has always encouraged us to use the, the standard sort of caliper measure. And in the example you mentioned, yes, they would get replaced with younger nursery trees that would then hopefully grow. We have had this exact problem, right? So in the, in the Commerce, uh, not, on Commerce Street, uh, when Hannaford had to make improvements to the Obashan site plan and access, um, the DRB rejected their initial, uh, proposal, in part because their landscaping wasn't sufficient, and part of the rationale was there are trees planted along Commerce Street and that, al- along the Obashan Plaza frontage, that have been there ever since I came to work here, and haven't grown an inch, you know, they are just stunted, just, in very bad shaped trees, probably because the soil conditions are poor. Um, and so, right now, it, it's not clear that the zoning administrator has the authority to go talk to them and say, hey, that tree met your, your site plan, but, uh, it hasn't grown at all in the last ten years, I think you need to replace it, and maybe work on the soil and get, figure out a way to make something grow there, maybe change the species, sometimes it's just an inappropriate species was put in a site, you know, that has poor drainage or what have you. But I, I don't think there's a way to fix what you're talking about.
So the words you're, the words you're hanging your head on there are vigorous growing condition.
Yes. No stunted, malformed, diseased, or distressed trees.
So, so when we, so when we plant the maple, and it comes to maturity thirty years later, and doesn't actually grow a lot, that you can, I should, it's time to cut it down, right? I'm being sarcastic. I'm being sarcastic.
Yes, well, we, we are having, uh, we.
It's not a vigorous growing condition anymore.
We are having the issue, uh, for the Kenny Drugs, uh, development, I, now, take a look at it when you drive by, right in front of that, on the one sixteen frontage, you'll notice several of the maples that were planted, uh, have leaves, but not on top, like the leader is dead. Uh, and so I've talked to, uh, our, our sort of, uh, assistant tree warden, Maria Amusk, who lives, uh, up in Thistle Hill, and, um, she's, she has some recommendations, we have to work with the, with the developer to help those trees.
Isn't there something in here that suggested the kind of trees that were, could be used?
That was in the lighting, um, the, the solar screening, um.
Well, in the site plan, there are landscaping standards, it talks about which kinds of plants you cannot use, and non-native exotic invasive kinds of, um, plants. We also talk about, uh, traditional street trees, I think is the language, I'll have to look, but we don't have a spec- we don't have a species list. Um, I think what we say is appropriate to the site, um.
It listed things like oak, maple, there was some tree, I didn't know what it was.
Yeah, I'm not recalling us being that specific on street trees, but maybe.
I read it last night.
What, what we do as a matter of practice is that we review landscaping plans based on the site and our knowledge of drainage, and, um, and we make suggestions to developers and to their landscape architects as to which trees might be a better fit. Not that all of us are arborists, but it's not rocket science, you know, some trees don't do well along the road where they're gonna get sprayed with road salt. Other trees don't do well in tightly compacted soils, and so on and so forth.
All right, Alex, it's nine thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we almost made it through page two, so you wanna pick up with, uh, section five point one point one next time?
I think you made it through all the fours, I didn't see a number.
Yeah, that, we did make it through, uh, we did make it through article four.
All right, so I think we're gonna skip, uh, one agenda item tonight, so agenda item four. So village growth area, DSC, discussion on that. And move on to item number five, minutes of June twenty-eighth.
Dawn, uh, said she wasn't sure she got the DSC discussion right, she wanted me to look at it. You, you got it, you got it perfect.
Okay, good.
You were right on.
All right, any changes?
Any other?
Get a motion.
A motion that we approve the minutes of June twenty-eight.
Get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who would oppose? Extentions?
Nope, abstaining.
All right. All right, thank you, uh, new business, Alex?
Just got a notification from the town of Moncton, which I have here, if anyone wants to look at it, it looks like they sent the whole bloody thing. Uh, their planning commission is holding a public hearing on August tenth regarding, uh, changes to their unified planning document. Looks like they have a unified subdivision zoning regulations all put together. And they describe what they're doing, they're not making changes to their subdivision regs, but they are making four changes to their zoning regulations. I, I don't think it's anything that, uh, impacts our mutual boundary with, with the town, but if you're interested, I will leave it there for anyone to look at.
If it's not about us, I mean.
Sometimes you.
Did you read it, Alex?
I did not, I, I read what, I read the changes they were making, but I didn't dive into the document to see how they were making them. Sometimes, you know, it might have an impact on the town, I think that's the most important reason you're getting notified. Sometimes you might just learn something that we could incorporate, right? So if you wanna see if Moncton's doing something good, take a look.
Okay, anything else? All right, motion of adjournment. Thanks, everybody, anybody hungry?
Yes!
Is that it?
Yes, I know.
Is it that one?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's the one.